I'll call to order the February meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, if you'd please remember to turn your cellphones off, I'd appreciate that, and if you'll just stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, can we have the roll call, please?
Davis?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Latham?
Here.
Rarman?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present.
Okay. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Ceremonies, appointments, or announcements, presentations, so any conflict of interest tonight from the board?
None.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Okay, roll call, Kelly.
Davis?
Aye.
Latham?
Aye.
Kimball?
Yes.
Rarman?
Aye.
Ostemeyer?
Steen.
Porter?
Aye.
Harry?
Okay, at this time, it's open to the citizens, if you have anything to present to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's not an agenda item tonight, we'd like to hear from you. Anybody out there have anything to bring forward? Looks like everybody is here for the agenda, so we'll move forward. Unfinished, our old business there is none, so we have a public hearing tonight, Mica Akers Annexation A-13-05, call public hearing to order.
John Manley, Associate Planner here with the City of Post Falls Planning Department, introducing Mike Akers Annexation. The applicant is ATS, Advanced Technology Surveying and Engineering, with the representatives, Jerry Sinclair and Michael Hunt, which are both present. The requested action is to review and approve the proposed smart code annexation and neighborhood The project location is denoted on the map there, with the asterisk on the northwest corner of Chase and Pole Line. The proposed project is also denoted a little bit more detailed, you see the bounds there generally, that's highlighted in red, with the northern half being proposed with smart code SC3, which is very similar to a single-family residential development, and then to the south, SC4, which is more of a mixed-use type zone, has variability between different types of housing products, to office, and some very limited commercial at this time. Also, you can see on this map that there's varying degrees of housing types, from the RMHP, which is your, like, it's a residential mobile home park zone, to R3, which is your multifamily, to R2, which is the duplex/multifamily product, with it being surrounded by what you'd see or determine as your single-family residential, being the R1 and R1S. The project size, approximately 16 acres, and the current land use is vacant and residential, there's currently two residential houses on that 16 acres. The water service provider would be East Green Acres, with the sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. So at this time, this would conclude staff's introduction to this project.
Thank you, John. We have the proponents come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jerry Sinclair, I'm with ATS, and tonight I will be representing Mr. Jeff Lawson and Ms. Sandy Runcorn.
My name is Michael Hunt, 104 Erie Court, I represent Mr. Dobson and the Van Brunt's.
First of all, I'd like to just start off with a little history of my background in both previous projects and this project. You know, I spent about 25 years living right here on that corner on Powder Horned and Stagecoach. Back in 1980, we moved in there, and behind us to the west was pretty much vacant filled, and I could observe Sandy's house when my wife would drop off the kids for daycare. So I've seen this area grow, you know, it was kind of anticipated that something would be coming in for this particular area down the road. The first one was Northern Plains, I was involved with the annexation and development of that, and my client, Jeff Lawson, built most of the homes in the Northern Plains subdivision. So when this particular parcel came available, he was eager to pursue that, so he could continue doing what he was doing in the Northern Plains in this lot next door. The, I think John just explained that the utilities are East Green Acres Irrigation District for the water, the sewer is the city, and Vista has the electric and gas to the project, and the waste, the garbage system will be City of Post Falls. Go through my notes here. When we originally approached the city, we were just looking at Mr. Lawson's there next to the Northern Plains project, and we were going to go with R1. I happened, he had a few questions, concerns about the neighbors, when, if he was approved for that development, to make extensions into their property, which would be Ms. Runcorn's property. I approached Sandy, to my surprise, she was interested in annexing also, and then we, I brought that to the attention of the Planning Department, and then there was Mr. Dobson's property in the corner also interested in annexing. So the Planning Department asked us to come in and talk about smart code instead of R1. We had some concerns, and I think they worked with us very well to address those concerns. One thing in particular, with R1, gave us a little bit more flexibility for what Mr. Lawson was doing in the previous development. After discussions, we were able to talk about some variances to the smart code, and I think we resolved a lot of those issues, so that Jeff could continue still building that style of home in his portion of, that would be Lot 9, Lot 9. And I think I just mentioned some of the posi, well, I did, some of the positives to the smart code, which we appreciated, was the fact that, once we made it through the annexation, created a lot of the exhibits we have, so that everybody knew what we were proposing to build out there, that that was, once we had blessing that this project could go, we could immediately go into design plans and review process and construction. So that was a big positive. The negative was the fact that Mr. Lawson may not be able to do exactly what he was doing, but with the variances, if you allow those variances, that would be great for There was one thing in the report, page 13, I believe, on the accesses, and I think they did cover it in the report, it was a question, it was on page 13, item 8, discussed no new connections for private, for lots to Chase or Pole Line, but reading further in the report, I think they allowed for the existing ones that Ms. Runcorn has on her lot. And I'm pretty sure that, once the development of her lot occurs, at least one of those accesses will be terminated anyway. Well, I did bring an exhibit, and this is one of the reasons why we asked for variance on the smart code 3, was this is very similar to what Mr. Lawson has been doing in the Northern Plains project, I don't think every lot has a shop with it, but the opportunity to do that would be to his advantage to have that ability. You know, I know that the annexation process is very important to you, as well as the City of Post Falls, the citizens of the city, and we've really appreciated the help and service that the Planning Department has given us, educating us on the needs that, you know, our concerns, what we wanted to make sure that we could do, as well as what you would like us to do in the smart code zone. So I think I'll leave it to Michael Hunt now, but I appreciate being able to talk to you tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I wanted to reiterate that staff has been great to work with on our part, and with bringing us forward with the understanding of smart code 3, smart code 4 versus R1. I'm going to speak in particular to the southerly five acres, which is right in this area, which are owned currently by Joe and Cindy Dobson and Rex and Joanne Van Brunt. Joe Dobson had come and requested annexation some, several years ago, and was denied, just in part, to my understanding, because of the need, not needing the R1. However, there are some real benefits to the city. When Mr. Dobson and Van Brunt joined in with the Runcorn and Lawson five acres to make this a 16-acre annexation, it solved a couple of large problems, one is, is that it brought the whole corner in, that whole part of Chase and Pole Line, which are two minor arterial Mr. Dobson and the Van Brunt five acres will dedicate approximately 1,000 linear feet of 30-foot wide right-of-way to two minor arterios, being 700 and some odd feet along Pole Line, which is to the south, and 300 or so feet of Chase Avenue. And these two, the right-of-way at this intersection, at some point, it's my understanding that the city may want a roundabout at that intersection, and we're agreeing to, the proponents are agreeing to provide the additional right-of-way that's needed for the future roundabout. The configuration of this five-acre parcel, and I'm just going to put this drawing up to, as an illustration, this was done by others some time ago for Mr. Dobson, and this is the Van Brunt property that's highlighted in yellow, and then this is the remaining property that Mr. Dobson owns, and as you can see, the configuration, this is an R1, their layout that was done several years ago, and because of the configuration of the Van Brunt property, and then just the remainder 120 or 130 feet to the north, makes these two residential, single-family residential lots, they're only 80-foot deep, less than 80-foot deep, so you're looking at almost a double-wide home turned longways in order to, to be able to have R1, single-family home there. And then this distance, which this is an arterial, the area that I've shaded in red is the dedication, the area that's being dedicated, that will be dedicated by the Dobsons and the Van Brunts to the city. And as you can see, you have double-fronted lots, this lot, the depth is only 75 feet, this lot is non-conforming, and there's, right now, the, in this layout, there are five non-conforming lots to the current residential requirements, including that this is laid out at a 60-foot right-of-way, and right now, we're required 65-foot, so that makes problem, exacerbates the problem. So in R1 zoning for this particular project, as I started looking at it with the Dobson, with Mr. Dobson, it didn't make a lot of sense. For one thing, the improvements, the pavement, the sidewalk, the curb and gutter, the relocation of public utilities, all of those are going to cost more than $90,000. So you take that $90,000, plus losing a fifth of the area of the five-acre total, and you try to make that, you know, absorb that with what will ultimately, in my opinion, be about 12 R1 lots, and it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't, it doesn't make financial sense for anybody to move forward with an annexation on the R1 in this five acres, because they won't be able to absorb the cost, just the value of the lot, including, and then in addition to that, you also have your 700 feet of improvements that you need internal, to try to absorb against about a dozen lots, single-family R1 lots. So it really didn't make sense that, for the next 30 years, or maybe ever, that this particular five-acre piece would be annexable as R1. Having been a planning commissioner for several years, you know, I look at things differently than I did years ago, as just a consultant, because I look at what are the benefits to the city, what are the benefits to the community, what is the benefit to the property owner? And so, as we started speaking with staff about smart code 4 for this area, what made sense to me and Mr. Dobson was something along the lines of a residential care facility, or something like that. And so, considering that the, there's almost seven-tenths of an acre that needs to be dedicated to the city in order to provide the public right-of-way for the two minor arterios, just on this parcel, and then the $90,000-plus cost of off-site improvements, in addition to the onsite improvements, this is why we felt that staff was correct, and we totally agree that a smart code 4 zone is proper for this, this particular parcel. And then in addition to that, the Runcorn property just to the north, the southerly half of that is being requested as S4 as well, which blends itself to, to being able to have more of a smart code area for someone to develop as a whole. One of the things that you'll see in the staff report is that we agreed to coordinate the theme, as Mr. Lawson and the Runcorn property develops, that as the Dobson property, which may develop later, would incorporate the same sort of theme, so that you don't have homes that are, you know, one style, or theme, or color group, and then all of a sudden, you have some, something that's completely different. One of the things, again, there are several things in the comprehensive plan and annexation goals, that this, this project, the property for the Dobson, Van Brunt, as well as Runcorn and Lawson, the entire 16 acres, there are several plan and, comprehensive plan and annexation goals that we meet or exceed. We provide a logical expansion of the city, and efficient economic provision of public services, particularly as far as traffic goes, with the right-of-way and the improvements to two minor arterios, and as Post Falls grows in that direction, I believe staff would agree that the traffic count is going to increase, and the importance of that, that intersection is going to increase, just as it did at Idaho, and Pole Line, and Spokane Street and Pole Line in the past. Another comprehensive goal is to build diverse, mixed-use neighborhoods that are walkable and sustainable. And the mixed use is, is as John Manley said, you know, there are R3 areas within the region, there are R2 areas within the region, and had we had the smart code back 20 years ago, they may be smart code 3 or 4 areas right now, in my opinion. Enhance the community, or the continuity of utility and road systems. Obviously, again, we're extending, this is a logical extension of Pole Line and Chase, as well as there's existing sanitary sewer at this point, and that'll be extended up into the Dobson and Van Brunt property as, as development, as development goes. And also, there are overhead lines, power lines, phone lines, things like that, that would ultimately be undergrounded.
There, the 15.
Land use should conform to smart code guidelines, this is one of the comprehensive plan and annexation goal, annexation goals, is that the land use should conform to smart code guidelines. And as individual parcels, as individual five-acre parcels, they do not meet the smart code requirement of, for annexation, but as a combination of the 16 acres, they do meet the, the goal and the intent of annexing as a smart code project. And so that's, and that's an important part of this annexation, particularly considering the Dobson, and whether or not the southerly five acres makes financial sense to annex in the future. And so as a 16-acre annexation, this is much more desirable property for, annexation property for the city.
Mr. Hunt, we need to limit your time to 15 minutes here, so...
Okay, am I done?
You're...
I'm done.
You're at that point right now.
You'll have the rebuttal option.
Well, I could, I could tell you that I haven't been told that I've run off at the mouth that, that politely in a long time. So, thank you.
You'll stick around for questions. You'll have a chance.
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner, do you have any questions at this point?
Then we have the staff report.
Yep. I was gonna say we need staff reports. Okay, John, let's do the staff report.
Would like to make one clarification before I begin the staff report, and when we were discussing the difference between R1 and SC3 and SC4, it was a discussion in which we provided the pros and cons of both, and discussed with the applicant, and let them pick their particular path, just wanted to add that clarification. So for the department, division, and committee comments, for this staff report, I begin with the Development Review Committee, which normally you're probably used to me beginning with planning comments or engineering comments to get go, but smart code actually enables this committee to review any sort of administrative variances, as well as consistency with smart code as a collective group. The current DC, sorry, the current DRC is generally comprised of the following, it's representatives from the Planning Division, Engineering Division, the Building Division, and the Parks Division, as well as the Public Services Director, also representatives from the Post Falls Police Department, and Cootney County Fire and Rescue. The purpose for having this group is it allows us to all to review any proposal for consistency with annexations, transportation master plans, comprehensive plans, and health and safety concerns, in one collective group, as well as park master plans. As I mentioned, the role of DRC is to review smart code projects and its conformity to Title 18, and make determinations on any requested administrative authorization variances. What are authorization variances? Well, generally, they're requested when certain elements of smart code doesn't necessarily meet the particular means of an end, or maybe, like on infill, the current built environment, so they'll request some sort of exceptions that helps facilitate their development for that area, and be consistent with the surrounding environment. But there are some items that aren't for consideration, and those are listed here with the maximum dimensions of traffic lanes, the required provisions of rear alleys and rear lanes, the minimum base residential densities, and the minimum parking requirements. So this allows a pretty vast range outside of those four to request some sort of variance. This particular applicant requested these four requests to be considered, and that is the civic space, and more particularly, it's, smart code requires within every home a playset, a playground, and so they asked for an exception from that. Cover parking into the first layer for SC3, cover parking into the second layer for SC4, which I'll go into more detail on both of those, and a reduction in the port depth So the first one, the civic space, and the waiver of being required to put in the playgrounds, premise of that would be, and then staff actually looked at, in coordination with the DRC, what is that built environment around it, what's that surrounding built environment, is there elements of that built environment that meet smart code standards as it is? One of those is the bedshed analysis that's required for a neighborhood plan, so we looked at two large civic spaces that could qualify for a smart code main civic space. And what you see there with bedshed 1, that's within the Montrose subdivision, the civic space type would be a green or a park, and it does actually have a playground in it, with an approximate size of 4.2 acres. You have bedshed Zone 2 up there to the east, a part of the Pioneer Ridge subdivision, and it has a civic space type of a green, with the approximate size of 1.2 acres. And when you look at this bedshed analysis, and the bedshed, it's about a quarter-acre pedestrian shed analysis, a radius, that kind of goes, what the goal is to have some sort of recreation activity within a five-minute walk. So when you look at the red meets and bounds of this proposed annexation, they got some main civic space in close proximity. Also, when you take in consideration that the playground requirement was not a requirement of any of the subdivisions of the surrounding communities, and this is a 16-acre annexation that's trying to fit in the same kind of building development pattern. And also, when you look at the sidewalks, the existing sidewalks that have been installed are denoted in yellow, with the, in red, would be what would be installed at the time when they finished the whole build-out of the project. So taking that all in consideration, as far as civic space, that it seems that upon development, that they would have an easy walk, an ease of walkability to the main civic spaces, and that it wouldn't be a hardship in the area not to put in a playground for that 16 acres. For the second request, which is cover parking into the first layer for SC3, when you're dealing... dealing with conventional zoning, typically, you have a front setback. You have a setback that says, this structure can only be so close to the front property line. SMART code, it's a little form-based, and it does things different. That's similar to as the first layer. Per SMART code, generally, when you're dealing with the first layer, they want to know from the front property line to the principal entrance wall, what's that distance? Well, and looking at here, this would be the principal entrance wall. So, what they're proposing is they still want to meet that minimum setback for a legit parking pad, a 20-foot parking pad to keep any parked vehicle out of the sidewalk or onto the street. A typical SC3 would have that garage 10 feet recessed from that principal entrance When you look at the surrounding built environment, that there are some that have a recess, but the predominant house has the garage sitting in front of some sort, whether it's two feet or three feet, you know, they have it sitting in front of that principal entrance wall. So, the DRC reviewed that and seemed that it appeared that approving this request would be consistent with the surrounding built environment and subdivisions. Request three, cover parking into the second layer for SC4. In SMART code, a typical SC4 would have an alley. So, this being the front of the house, you'd have an alley you can come down, you can access either an attached or detached garage from the rear. Well, in looking at the proposed layout, you would have a front-loaded SC4 product. SMART code also has the minimum lot width of 24 feet. So, taking that in consideration, upon the request, if you, every 24 feet you had a garage, you'd end up having no room for on-street parking, which could be detrimental to fire and the health and safety of that streetscape, as well as the streetscape aesthetics. So, staff recommended approval based on some conditions, that no more than 50% of the front of the SC4 be a garage, no two similar houses adjacent to each other, and similar house plans shall be separated by a minimum of two lots. So, as the SC4 may be a little more narrower, that you're getting some diversity in that streetscape, and plus, get the on-street parking for visitor parking. It was also important to allow for parking within that first layer, so that way, if you lived at one of those residences, you can once again get your car off that sidewalk and out of that public rights away. And so, the last request was a reduction in the porch depth requirement. Currently, SMART code requires all porches be eight-foot deep. I went out and looked, drove over and looked at the surrounding built environment and reported that there's very few eight-foot-deep porches. There may be a couple, but, and they vary in size from very small, four-feet, entrance-way type porch, to larger. And there's houses that don't have any porch in the area. And when you look in consideration to Black Stallion, Pioneer Ridge, and even Northern Plains, there was nothing that required a porch. It's just as they were developed, they're installing porches. And so, DRC determined that it's a valid argument, and that we've recommended approval of this variance. At this time, though, before I go on, if there's questions with these, I could stand and ask questions about these variance requests.
Is it your intent to totally eliminate the porch requirement, or is it your intent to reduce the eight-foot requirement?
And speaking with the applicant, their intent is to continue building as they've built prior. But that being said, what it comes down to is they have a house, housing products, housing plans, and from my understanding, if the house has a porch, then they were putting in a porch. So, in Northern Plains, a lot of those houses have porches. Even when you go to Pioneer Ridge, a lot of those have like entrance-way porches. So, I don't know if...
And there's not, to clarify, it's my understanding that there's not a requirement that you have to have a porch on those homes. It's just if you do a porch, then it's supposed to be the eight feet deep. Is that correct?
In SMART code, if you do a porch, yeah, it would have to be...
It's not that every home in SMART code has to have a porch, it's just if you do a porch, there's the eight-foot depth requirement.
So, the market, more or less, has implemented porches on a majority of the houses in the area. Just as well, if the market demanded no porches, you'd probably be seeing hardly any porches Now, for the Planning Division, when we looked at this project, the project is within the Post Falls area of city impact. The area of city impact, that's a, an agreement for the areas outside, interjurisdictional agreement outside the city limits, and this area of city impact for Post Falls, that's the area that's designated for growth. So, they're proposing a project in an area that's designated for Post Falls growth. On the SMART code future land use map, it designated this area as G4 infill growth sector, which it is. And the proposed SC3 and SC3-formed SC3 zones is appropriate and adjacent to two arterials. So, the rationale for the Planning Department for considering the SC3 and the SC4 appropriate is mostly because as you look from the north to the south and in the surrounding environment, you have this potentially future busy intersection. And generally, you stick higher intensities next to intense road structures, and as you get away from that, you get lower intensity. So, with going from SC4 to SC3, then to the larger Northern Plains R1 lots, which eventually then would go to the larger R1S lots, that you're getting that transition of intensity on the built environment level. Also, SMART code is a flexible form-based code. So, we wanted to highlight that as a comment, more or less, as a comment of awareness, is that within Exhibit S3 of the staff report, that within SC3, that would allow some mixing of uses on that corner lot, some office and some limited commercial, which may aid that adjoining community and nearby, so you don't necessarily have to go all the way to Mullen or Saltees for services. You may just be able to go right to the, that corner intersects, whether it's an elderly care center that your mother's staying in, or if they have a, if there's a small little commerce location to go get milk and eggs potentially. The Engineering Division commented that the proposed thoroughfare assemblies are appropriate, given the surrounding neighborhood and within the subdivision plan. Right-of-way dedication for Pole Line and Chase Road will, would occur at the time of the annexation agreement, but in the interior would occur at the time that those particular phases develop, they would get the right-of-way dedication for those public streets. Development or subdivision of Lot 7 of microacres, which is this lot here, at the most southerly extent, that upon development or subdivision, that it'll be required to get the frontage improvements on both Chase and Pole Line. And that landscaping, irrigation, and swell maintenance will be required by either some sort of property owners association or homeowners association. That the city of Post Falls, oh, I'm sorry, in regards to sanitary sewer, that the city of Post Falls water reclamation facility has the capacity to serve the proposed project. And highlighted in yellow, that's upon the annexation and the annexation agreement, establishing the appropriate sanitary sewer easements to ensure connectivity from the north to the most southerly lots, and that the bounds are approximately where you see in that yellow dotted line. Development or subdivision of Lot 7 of microacres, the house currently located right about where the sub-southeastern corner, that upon the idiosyncras occurring, that they'll be required to connect the sanitary sewer. Other agencies' comments on this is that the, both the Post Falls Police Department and Cootney County Fire and Rescue have commented have no issues with the proposed projects. So, at this time, I'd stand for any further questions you may have on the project.
Just, will you quickly run back to under administrative authorizations and variances? What was the request that you had put for the covered parking into second layer for
The second, no two similar houses adjacent to each other?
Yeah, I just wanted to look at that one.
Yeah, the purpose of that is potentially because SMART code has a minimum lot size of 24 feet, that if you had two 24-foot lots right adjacent to it, you could have a two-story house. So, the bottom story is dedicated to parking, the upper story is dedicated to the residential unit. So, technically, you could say that meets the 50%. If you did that down the whole street, or side by side, you're starting to deteriorate, I think, that the aesthetics of that corridor.
Right.
Any other questions for John?
Of all the letters that were sent out to the residents in the surrounding area within 300 feet, has there been any response back from anybody that, because in the notes here, it shows that we haven't received any yays or nays against or for the project? Have we received anything since then?
At this point, I'm not aware of any. I don't know of you, Hillary or Kelly.
No, I have not, no.
Thank you.
Question. SC4 rundown, kind of what is, is commercial required a certain percentage, or is it just allowed? And of that, what types of commercial? I mean, would you see a gas station on the corner, or is it neighborhood-type commercial?
Gas station, I'll have Hillary look up real quick here. Requires administrative authorization.
Okay.
And at that location, I think it would be highly unlikely.
Do you want to see the table up there?
Yeah, thanks.
I'll put that on the overhead.
Let's tell them.
It's a little fuzzy, but this is the SC4, hold on here, if you follow that down to retail, so...
Solid black is permitted, and then...
So, you could do a deli, a retail building, a display gallery, a restaurant, a coffee shop, but we have a gas station, which is over under the automotive category. My eyes are having a hard time looking at it.
That doesn't look like it's permitted, is it?
Yeah, all automotive.
No.
Automotive service.
Yeah, gasoline above, that's not.
If the gas isn't permitted at all, so you couldn't do gas. So, and if you look at our current, the current code for SC4 only allows for one commercial use per intersection.
Hmm, okay.
So, it's not a percentage, it's one user per intersection.
John, as part of this, I think we're being asked to look at approving a neighborhood plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, because when you approve a neighborhood plan, and I was meaning to mention that, it's actually you're approving a subdivision plan, too. So, you're bringing the annexation and a subdivision plan that upon future, as long as they meet the conditions of what was proposed, they just go to plat and do a construction improvement agreement, and then meet the intent of that approved neighborhood plan.
So, as I look at this, if you could go back to, well, I guess, the purple drawing? Here we go. That works. As I look at that, it looks like we've got, we're basically approving the street plan, which seems fairly appropriate for the zoning. But it also looks like the southern parcel would end up being a large lot development. And in the SC4, that would mean probably, based on the loca, obviously, it's not going to be single-family residential, based on the block plan. So, probably multifamily or commercial.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, I'm not opposed to it necessarily. It's probably appropriate.
Yeah, you have one...
Row houses or something, too.
Yeah, row houses or something that has private access.
So, you have access off Pole Line into some common parking area or access.
So, John, that's a future phase that hasn't, isn't part of any neighborhood plan yet. Do I understand that right? That's why we're not seeing any kind of roadway plan or anything like that in the SC4, the dark purple?
At this time, it's foreseen that they wouldn't extend, that they would access off Pole Line into this.
So, Ray, kind of what you're getting at, I think, I think I agree with you, is that we're allowing or potentially approving an annexation, but not really knowing what's, there's no neighborhood plan for that southerly part, because it's a future.
Well, as Mr. Hunt pointed out, that if it's not a, if we don't, well, I guess probably the way to really look at it would be, if the neighborhood plan and the block layout doesn't include a road through there right now, then it kind of puts it into a corner, so to speak, from a road layout standpoint. I mean, he had a road layout that prob, I mean, it, obviously, it was, he had an R1 subdivision in there, but if we're asked, being asked to approve a neighborhood plan tonight, which is the same as a subdivision, then it looks like we're approving something that would be a large lot.
Right.
In an SC4, which would be indicative of...
We can have engineering.
Paulus from engineering would like to add comments on that issue.
Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. One of the things to consider while you're looking at that Lot 7 is that from a subdivision standpoint, it would stand by itself as a block. If they were to go and subdivide it, they would have to meet the minimum requirements of the SMART code and what the minimum lot sizes are. If they start to proceed with a larger lot, you still have within the SMART code a requirement of a minimum density that has to be met with the SMART code for zoning. So, there, if you do have a more of a retail-type use, there is some compatibility where they have to show that they are still meeting the intent of the SMART code with the density being provided on that site. It's a lot easier to see a nexus of that if you do with, do a, you know, assisted living type facility. The density hits really quick. If they think that they can do smaller units of what we would consider single-family residential, but meeting the SMART code for density, then they have to show that the lots that they're providing are still going to meet the SMART code requirements and the city requirements.
And will you refresh my memory on the minimum density of SC4?
SC4, it's, minimum is eight units gross, or SC3 is three units gross.
That means the single frontage on the East West Street will be at the density of eight units per acre.
In the SC4 zone section of Lot 8.
The SC4 zone section.
On that SC4 zone along Lot 8, yes.
16 lots, ish. Sixteen lots, ish.
After you subtract out the public rights away.
I just ballparked it.
You're going to be a little bit lower than that.
Okay.
But yeah, you're going to start seeing those smaller lots, probably, you know, maybe around the thirty-foot range. Was that Crossings, Crossings First Edition up off of Saringa Street in Post Falls? That's a Smart Code project where they ended up, I think most of them were about twenty-six foot lots with SC four zone.
But those had alley access, correct?
They had alley access on that.
From a built environment standpoint, you know, if you have, let's just say, a three-story assisted living facility, then you transition to a two-story, maybe residential to maybe, you know, some single story. So it, it does as good of a job as it can do under a short distance to help mitigate the impacts of this potential future busy intersection to some single-family homes in a close proximity.
You good, Ray?
Yeah, you answer my questions, thank you.
Anything else, anybody else have questions? Okay, this time, do we have anybody that wants to speak in favor of?
We do not have anyone.
Just, I think somebody has signed up.
Does anybody want to speak?
Okay, then neutral. Anybody neutral on the issue that wants to speak? Okay, so we have no one that wants to speak neutral on the issue. Then those that are in opposition, first we'll have Mike Scharf. Come on to the mic, please, and state your name and address and.
I'm Mike Scharf. I live at twenty-four twenty-nine Rawhide Ridge. I'm in opposition. I'm currently, it's about four houses north of Pole Line. And it used to be a nice quiet area. Since I've moved in, they've made it a four-way stop right there. So the road noise now is a lot worse than it used to be. And I think putting anything commercial in there is just going to make that even worse. Not to mention all the lights and everything shining in, you know, in the back windows and. I mean, everything's zoned R one around there. I don't know why. And I don't understand exactly the difference between the SC three and SC four. I mean, if it's all one, I understand if it's all one. You know, if it's all houses, then it should be all houses. But that one is zoned SC four. So that could be something completely different. Is that, am I correct? So that could potentially be, it could be a liquor store.
I don't know if that fits in that category.
It probably would fit under retail, but.
That's not something I'm really in favor of in my neighborhood. Or a bar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Dennis Johnson.
My name is Dennis Johnson. I live at twenty-four twelve Longhorn Court. We're basically the northeast corner of Chase and Pole Line. And first of all, there's no commercial in that whole area. So it doesn't, doesn't meet the Post Falls planning as far as the surrounding area is all R one zoning. And they show lot seven, they don't show what could be built there. It could be apartment buildings, condos, duplexes. It could be, like you said, a liquor store. That whole area north of there, they're one acre lots, nice family houses. Our, we live in Rawhide Ridge, they're all nice family, single-family housing. All around us is all single home, or single-family housing. And to bring in commercial on the outskirts of town, it just does not fit. It just sticks out like a sore thumb. It just, I mean, you wouldn't want a liquor store in your backyard. I mean, so our backyard will face the streetlights and parking lights. And then, not to mention, you know, but about a lift station? Did they talk about a sewer lift station? Because you're going to need a sewer lift station to pull all that sewage up to the treatment plant. And I understand that the treatment plant is already maxed out. So then bringing in more high-density farther away. And, you know, I don't know about what they're going to do for a lift station. We haven't seen any plans on what kind of development they're doing. You know, it's just a high-density area is just not fitting for that area. I don't mind if they, you know, annex into the city R one like everything else. I don't have a problem with that. It'll be just like the residential, like what's around there. A few years ago, we fought on the, on the south, on the southwest corner. We fought that, they wanted to put in commercial on that corner. Now, I don't mind annexing into the city at R one like everything else in that area. But if we want to do commercial, I suggest maybe we should rethink it and maybe come back at a later date at least so we can get more prepared. And I guess that's basically my thoughts.
Thank you. And next, the last one we have is Chesney Johnson.
It's actually Chrissy Johnson. And I live at twenty-four twelve North Longhorn Court. And we're on the corner of Chase and Pole Line. A couple of questions. We spent more than half the evening talking about the residential part and how the houses were going to be built and whether they're going to have porches or whether they were going to have garages or how they were going to be similar to each other. But nothing was really brought up what that commercial piece of property was going to be. It was just kind of thrown there, kind of iffy what it was going to be. Some of my concerns about it being light commercial or a commercial. I know that there's a development near the landings on the corner that has a subway, a liquor store, a speedy mart, and a fitness center. And I'm assuming that's kind of what they're trying to go with this. However, you're going to put a liquor store or any other kind of speedy mart or anything that's kind of commercial there? Our children in our subdivision have to walk to River City Middle School. So you're going to increase traffic severely on Chase and Pole Line. And our children have to walk to school to and from. And what's going to be there? A liquor store that they're going to have to walk by in the middle of the afternoon on their way home from school? Or I know a gas station was brought up, but I, I know that that's probably, there's all kinds of environmental things that would not pertain to having a gas station there. That was way out of the question. But as far as anything else, I don't want my kids to walk that way. I don't want our, see my kids or anybody else having to, you know, worry about how they're going to get to school and walk through a retail area when it's so out there right now. It, like we were saying, it's all, all R one out there. It's all single-family homes. There's no other commercial near there other than the slab in down on the corner of Seltice and Chase. And that's fine, that's away from the houses. We don't have houses in our backyards that are going to have a bar or a liquor store or something else in the back of our houses. Like I said, there wasn't a lot brought up as far as what was going to develop there. We understand that that is a big parcel land and eventually it will be into something because I, I am assuming the owners of there don't want to stay there any longer and have a farmhouse. So it will be eventually made into some sort of residential lots. And, and that's acceptable, we understand that. But as far as there being any sort of commercial there, it, it just doesn't fit the, the, the Post Falls area. It doesn't fit that area. Like I said, there was nothing said as far as what is, what's the height requirements? What are they going to build there? Is it going to be to where it's an apartment complex and people can actually see in our backyard? Or are there going to be big floodlights there that when we, our children go to bed at night, are those lights going to be shining straight into their windows? And they're never going to be able to open their windows because the lights are shining so bright? It was brought up that there's, they were talking about doing the roundabouts. And they said that the roundabouts, there's one on Chase and, or I'm sorry, there's one on Spokane Street and Pole Line, and there's one on Idaho and Pole Line. Yes, there is, and they're heavily trafficked roundabouts. But is there commercial near any of those? No, there's no commercial, not on any of those corner lots, not in any of those roundabouts. So you're talking about putting a commercial where you're going to have a roundabout. Is that, I mean, what kind of busy intersection is that going to be? I, I'm trying to think of one roundabout in our area that has a commercial on a corner. And I can't think of any off the top of my head. So I, I can see a four, I can see traffic lights going in there. If that's what's going to be proposed as commercial, that will be down the road. I, I know the roundabout sounds better to the homeowners than having a traffic light in their backyard, but I, I can't see a roundabout with a commercial sitting on the corner there. The other thing is, is how are the roads going to handle that traffic? I mean, you've got two lanes right there. How is that going to affect having all that more traffic going through there? You've got, you know, railroad tracks there, you've got, I mean, how is all that going to play into all that? The other thing was, is you had mentioned some benefits. What are the benefits as property owners? What are, what, you, you mentioned that with the city, we're getting nice sidewalks on that corner. That's very true, that, that would be very nice to have sidewalks. But what are the benefits to our, to the homeowners in that area? More traffic? I don't, I don't think that's a benefit. The other thing is, is that there was no oppositions in the letters. I've been on Facebook and I have been telling my neighbors about it. Most people that aren't aware of zonings and aren't familiar with the terminology, they don't know what an SC two is or an SC four or any of that. When I contacted some of our owners or our neighbors, they're just like, they don't understand it's commercial. They don't understand, they know R one residential. I mean, they know R two, they, they know stuff like that, but they don't know what this new, and you mentioned it's a new thing with SC two is or SC three is. They don't know what that is. So they don't have time or they're not prepared to propose or oppose that. So, I mean, I'm sure after, and unfortunately, we were going to go door to door and talk to our neighbors and, and tell them what was, because we understand it. But it was so cold and got hit with all the snow that we unfortunately didn't have time to do that. But talking to a few neighbors recently, they're, you know, what we could try to get here tonight, they understand what it's all about, so. That's really about it. I just, I really, we've lived in that house for nineteen years and we built it from one in nineteen ninety-five. We, all three of us that are here tonight, we've all been homeowners since the very beginning there and we've seen a lot of growth in the area. We, you know, we accept it and we understand it, but we just do not want any sort of commercial or assisted living homes or apartment buildings. Let's just keep it residential. That's what's out there. That's what, that's what the Prairie has always been about. So I don't understand why every little chunk of land that comes up has to throw some commercial in with a bunch of houses. We have Super One down the street that we can go get our groceries and our liquor and things like that at. So anyways, that's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Rebuttal? Do the proponents have any rebuttal?
First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens for coming and voicing their opinions. I think that that's a, an important part of the process. I'd like to state for the record that there will not be a lift station required for this project. The property, the property, all of the property will sewer to the north, which is, has existing gravity sewer, which goes to, it goes to the north and then heads to the south, to the west and then to the south. And there is capacity, as staff reported, for the sewer. As far as the SC four area, as I stated before, you know, the intent of the property owner is, at this time, is for a residential care facility. This is one of the reasons why we did not extend the street through the property to the south and this, and the street was brought over to Chase Avenue, was to allow for the, the room that's required for that. And while there, a gas station is certainly not an, an approvable use within the SC four. And while there are commercial and other uses that, that are allowed, they, you know, it, it all has to make sense. I mean, it's not just what is allowed, but it's what is practical for the area. And as far as the roundabout is concerning the roundabout, this is something that's good for the city of Post Falls. And this is something that the engineering department will dictate whether or not becomes a reality. As far as not having a layout for the SC four or the SC three areas, that is, is normal to this process. Part of the reason is because there is a lot of work to do. Once the zoning is, is accomplished, the annexation is accomplished and the, the reality of how you develop this property in a, in whole, those are all things that, that become a, a part of the process. Well, what we do know is that R one does not work for this property. We know that. I mean, we know that from just looking at trying to do two arterial roads and potentially a portion of the roundabout with twelve lots. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense. And, and if that is the desire of the city, then it may be quite a while before, you know, this right of way, that, that the roads become a reality, I suppose. There is continuity, as staff said, as far as the getting to parks and other areas. And we meet the, the stated goals of the comprehensive plan and the, and zoning. And that's, that's why we're here. Staff did not talk us into, and I agree with John, and I apologize if, if I gave any sort of impression that, that staff was promoting the SC four or the SC three area. They were giving us clear options. And it was clear as we went through and started looking at the, at the layouts that the, the only option that worked for the, us was the SC four, which is a part of where the community is going. And that's where we want to go, is to, to, to an area that, or to a zoning that allows for flexibility in design and creativity. that allows for flexibility in design and creativity.
Yeah, just leave it there for a second. Again, Jerry Sinclair. I really don't have a rebuttal, per se, to some of the citizen comments, but I did want to just acknowledge that, you know, that you were talking, somebody had a question about the SC3 and the SC4 on, on the Runcorn property. How one side is more like an R1 and the other side is getting a little bit higher density if you go with these zonings. And it was just primarily because this could be Lot 7, as we, as Michael has discussed, could be a little more higher density project. And that would allow some buffering in between the other parcels. So just, just to comment on the reason, the rationale by splitting up that zoning on that particular parcel.
Okay.
And then I came up also, just in case you still had questions of us.
Any questions of them?
I do. I got, I got one. So with the SC4, the single-family SC4 along the, on the Runcorn property, with the minimum density, it looks like we're probably, what, at 35 or 40-foot lots? Would that be about right?
Yeah, I think they can go down even a little less than that.
They can go down less, right? But that would, that would probably accomplish, that would be about as wide as they would be? Be 35 or 40 feet?
What's the maximum, John?
Minimum, but there's no maximum.
Oh, okay. I thought there was a maximum. Yeah. So you...
So, but in order to achieve the density that you need for that, you're kind of stuck with a width or a maximum. Or, I mean, you can't get the density unless you go with some sort of maybe, I mean, you could, you could conceivably go apartments there. But I guess one of the things that, I think probably the point of SC4 and going to those narrower lots and the higher density is to not have a row of garages on very, very narrow lots. And that was kind of the whole point of having an alley. So if you have narrow lots, then you have an alley with a rear-loaded garage. And in all honesty, I'm not so sure that, I guess in my opinion, that the SC3 wouldn't be more appropriate all the way across the Runcorn property. I don't know if there necessarily need to buffer between something like a, let's say, an apartment building or an assisted living facility or a daycare or something like that, butting it to someone's backyard. And I'd love to hear what some of the other commissioners have put that, input on that.
I was, when we were, when we finally deliberated, I was going to bring up that, you know, what, the, the one thing that's bugging me is you're up against agricultural suburban in the county, I think, and behind that's R1S, Post Falls. And maybe there's a way to say that within that SC4 zone, if it's a commercial use rather than a residential use, and maybe the residential use includes multifamily or doesn't, but there would be some kind of buffering requirement on that west or even north side. I agree with you, but it, but there's a big difference, like we've been discussing, between retail stores versus an assisted living facility or apartment. I guess what's confusing about the SC4 too is that it's not dictating commercial. It's just allowing flexibility. And like you were saying, Mr. Hunt, that the market probably would dictate some multifamily or assisted living or something like that. You probably would not see a retail store there, but that's not to say it couldn't happen. But it, it, it allows for more creativity and flexibility. And on that hand, I like it, but...
One of, excuse me.
Yeah.
One of the, you know, one of the components of this is that, you know, there's an existing driveway to the Van Brunt property right now. And we would be limited to two driveways, two major driveways and one on Pole Line, one small driveway at the most. This is, this is the most that we would be allowed. And then on Chase Avenue, this is, we would be allowed one driveway. But one of the benefits, I suppose, for having all of that area as SC4 is the possibility that someone could develop it all as, as, you know, an assisted, a residential assisted living. And so there is that possibility. It's not any sort of reality as far as discussions or anything like that that are going on. But it, it does. That's one good thing about having the SC4 is that it, you know, it, it does, you know, having both of these areas as SC4 is that it does allow for a larger, more planned sort of a, a development. As far as the buffering goes, I don't think that the project proponents would have, at least I can speak for Mr. Dobson, he wouldn't have any sort of problems with having stipulation or whatever to the annexation. I know that wouldn't be a problem. I think that that would be naturally occurring as far as design goes. I mean, we don't, generally speaking, try to design things that are at the maximum anyway, because you've got parking requirements, you've got all landscaping requirements, you've got all kinds of other parts of, of the SC4 designation, which are, are, were developed as a part of that, as, as, for this specific type of reason. You get to see my bald head this time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll go to deliberations. So, Ray, I guess we'll start with you.
Sure. I guess one of the things I'm kind of struggling with is the third exception that they're asking for, which is covered parking, allowing covered parking in the second layer for SC4, which makes all the lots front-loaded. And I, I think the intent of that zone is to not have a row of garages and, or just not have garage, 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 garage every 40 feet, taking up 20-foot, a 20-foot width of a 30-foot, 45-foot lot. And if the SC4 zone, as proposed, was there to increase the size of a residential care facility site, then you wouldn't need that element, elimination of the SC4 or the alley, essentially. And I think that's kind of the whole point of having that density is, is if you do have it, then we probably should have an alley there. Conversely, or, or it'd be more appropriate to have it as SC3 to that property line. But that's probably, I don't know if it's up to us to be changing the, where the, where the line is between the two. That's probably the applicant and what they want to do, not us. But I, I do like, I'm, I'm just not a big fan of, I mean, I'm not a big fan of alleys in the first place, but if we're going to have lots that require that kind of density, then I think it probably should not look like a row of garages. Other than that, I, I mean, the SC4 on the corner, that would allow something like a daycare facility, which would be probably pretty nice in the area, which some of the other, you know, another zone wouldn't allow. I don't, I'm not, Mark, I kind of agree with you that I don't, I don't think it's, the neighborhood is going to attract a commercial development, commercial site. I don't know if the corner is quite that busy or, or something like that. That would, that would do that. It'd probably be a lot more, I'm sure, end up being an apartment building or a residential care facility, which I think is probably pretty appropriate, given the residential use in the area, the fact that there's four plexes just up the street. It's all in the same general vicinity.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we clarify, it sounds like Runcorn would be okay having the R3, I mean, I'm sorry, SC3 to their property line. I don't know if you want to ask for the applicant to clarify that or not.
I think they did already.
Okay. So if you're good, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Ryan?
What he said.
No, I'm just kidding.
Um, no, you know, obviously, living in close proximity and seeing, I definitely, you know, see the concerns, the, the SC4 density, there definitely is a concern with that. But, you know, again, it's, it's, it's kind of a tough situation. I think it, in a way, would make sense for everything to be SC3. That's the nice thing with smart code is having that flexibility. However, there is some uncertainties. However, it's not necessarily, my understanding, it's not our decision to try to find out exactly what those uncertainties are. Does it fit within city's smart code and, and does it work? So, so, a little here and there.
Okay. Paula?
SC4 is my biggest concern. That's what I have a problem with.
Okay. Mark?
I'm actually okay with it, with some conditions that, you know, again, it's, it's the buffering. It's a pretty radical change between the two, but it does, it's not, it's not a CCS zone. I guess that's what I keep bringing up, is that it's not dictating that the only thing you can put there is commercial. So you got to think of it that it could all be homes in there.
Or a fire station.
And I've seen some of that in the last few years, that some of these zones have just gone to houses. You know, they've even, people, they've been doing zone changes from commercial to residential. So that SC4 could be residential or commercial. And I think that's the thing to remember, too. It's not dictating any one thing. And I wonder if, I wonder if some of those quasi-commercial uses, like an assisted living or a daycare or something, is more appropriate than a house sitting right on the northeast or northwest corner there of that busy intersection. So. I would, I would have a few conditions myself, but...
Okay. Brett?
I agree with Paul. I have some concerns about the, the commercial aspects of it. Again, we can't look at uncertainties down the road, but I think we also have to pay attention to some of the citizen comments that come in. They live in that area. They are part of the city of Post Falls. And I, you know, I think they have some value. So I think we have to take that into consideration.
What about you, sir?
I think it's a great infill project. I think the staff did a commendable job in going through the comprehensive plan and the smart code and seeing what fits and what works and what doesn't work in this particular area. I agree with the, the SC4-3 split. Maybe we should look at that being totally SC3 there, particularly given the comments that Ray's made earlier about the garages and, and the backloading there. But other than that, I'm pretty comfortable with the project.
So, having said that, what's your pleasure?
Looking at smart code, if that was all SC3, I'm just looking under retail as far as deli retail space, all of that would require...
Admin, authorize it.
The deli and retail, those are all permitted. Oh, yours, for the SC3, correct. Those would all be administrative authorization. So that'd be through the development review committee.
What would an assisted living facility fall under? As a, would it be a residential use of some sort or...
I don't, John, do you recall how we looked at that? If that was more, it's kind of, it's not necessarily lodging.
Yeah.
It's more, I guess, residential.
Well, how big a place could they put in there because under SC4, it's up to 12 rooms for an inn, so...
16 or less for assisted.
Not a sidehouse or a house or a living.
So what's the room between an inn and assisted living?
Yeah, it's a little, I feel like it.
Yeah, it kind of falls under, there's an other civil support. There's a medical clinic, so might be quasi that because they provide medical care and assisted living. So that probably makes the most sense. And that is permitted outright in SC3, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'm happy to share, have the, if you guys want to have the table up there to pass around too, to look at the...
It's on a...
Okay. Oh, perfect. Okay, good.
Yeah, page 40.
Okay.
We just have to keep blowing it up.
Okay.
What's everyone's thoughts as we stare at the screen?
Need a motion. One way or the other.
Yeah. I'm getting there.
Let's see.
Any differences?
Not much.
Administrative authorization, SC3.
Let's see here. Right there?
Yes.
And Hillary, what are the height limitations on SC3 versus SC4 as far as the number of stories?
Let's see. The SC3, two stories maximum, three stories maximum under SC4.
Okay.
There's a two-story minimum under SC4.
So it's required to be two stories or more?
Mm-hmm.
If it's...
Two-story can also be defined as, is it 25 feet from ground level to the top of the sidewall? So if you have just a single-story building and you have a 14-foot interior space, you can, you can have, it qualifies as two-story without actually physically building a two-story.
Just out of curiosity, that whole neighborhood.
Yeah, it is.
So you can't build a one-story in an SC4, whether it's residential, even if it's residential?
You can currently request administrative authorization to do a single story.
To be quite honest, I, I really don't see that. I mean, I live right there in that general vicinity. I, I don't necessarily see a, a commercial use happening there. Not for a very, very, very long time. A lot of the other projects that we've done, the corner of Seringa and Pole Line in Fieldstone is a, that's commercially designated within the PUD. And simply because there's been zero interest in it, it's, hasn't built out. And that's got a lot of houses around it. It's got a lot of rooftops. There hasn't been any interest in it. I think the closest interest anyone's ever had was a daycare facility. You know, with commercial being where it is in Post Falls and us being more of a bedroom community, most people commute, commercial seems to be on the way home to or, to or from work. Mostly back home from work. But that said, I, I do think that, that, you know, higher densities at a, at an intersection of two arterials is probably pretty appropriate. It's, it's, it's appropriate with what we've done in most other places, having apartments there or an assisted living facility is, is, you know, we've got four plexes at the intersection of Spokane Street and Pole Line. There are a bunch of, I mean, there, there are apartments at most of our, or at a lot of our intersections like that, where we have arterials. Mullen and Greens Ferry is a good example. And that's right across, right next to or across... And that's right across, right next to or across the street from single-family residential. Seems to mix pretty well. So based on that, I think I'm going to make a motion to approve the annexation, adjusting the boundary between SC four and SC three to the southern property line between, or southern property line of the Runcorn property, eliminating the request to allow, or to allow parking within the second, is it the second tier?
Second layer.
Second layer of SC four. And adopting the findings and conclusions found in the staff report. And approving the neighborhood plan. I think I got it all.
Ray, before somebody seconds, would you consider looking at a buffer on the west side if that SC four is a non-residential use? I'm just throwing it out there. You've made the motion, so...
Um, what type of buffer would you be talking about?
I don't know. I guess we would need to define that. I'm thinking of a 10-foot vegetative buffer or a six-foot wall. But I don't know. Maybe that makes things...
I think that falls, if it's commercial, that falls within the commercial.
Would that...
I think it does.
Yeah, because we have the Title 18 standards for buffering between commercial and residential.
And you get to us. Just because it's smart code doesn't get them out of the site plan review process. So they would still process the buffering yards per a site plan review.
Yeah.
Between, because you have that egg residential to the west, so there'd be some buffering that would have to come on the west side.
Fair enough. I'll second that.
Okay. We'll have a roll call vote.
Davis?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Ostermeyer?
No.
Rehrman?
No.
Latham?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right.
No new business, staff comments?
Yes. I'll be presenting the impact fee report 2013. So the Finance Director has prepared the Development Impact Fee Report 2013, and it's part of the annual audit for fiscal year 13. And it's a requirement of the state for every governmental entity that collects impact fees to report on it on an annual basis. So in the report that you all received as part of the, the staff report and packet, it shows that in fiscal year 13, approximately $715,273 were collected in impact fees. And $1.63 million of impact fees were spent on roads, parks, and public safety projects to assist with mitigating growth-related impacts in the community. So more specifically, under roads, the projects that received impact funding were for the Celtees congestion, Seventh Avenue Design, Idaho Street Widening Project, Pole Line Idaho Roundabout, Spencer Street between Second and Third Avenues, the 15th, 16th realignment and signal, and the Celtees Mullen congestion studies. And approximately $1.34 million were expended on the road projects. Under parks, the impact fee money was spent on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and improvements at Corbin Park, Meadows Park, a pickleball that was done at Sportsman, Boys and Girls Club, and Corbin Ditch. And approximately $193,575 were expended on parks projects. And under public safety, the police department spent their impact fees in two main areas in fiscal year 2013. They used it on the police facility and wireless communication infrastructure. The impact fees were used to pay off debt on the current police department facility and also to enhance the city's wireless coverage and the wireless communication network. And that network allows the police officers to access the police department network while they are patrolling the city. And approximately $98,300 were expended under public safety impact fees. So no decision is required by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this information will also be presented to the City Council. But it's especially relevant since our Planning and Zoning Commission also serves as our Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the information.
Questions for Hillary?
Are impact fees increasing? Or not increasing, but has a revenue from impact fees? Is it increasing?
It kind of depends. Let's look at the chart. We have...
Put those up and down with expenditures.
It might be helpful, I can put up on the overhead if you'd like to see. We have on, the third attachment was impact fee history, so it dates back to fiscal year 1999, and it goes through 2013. So that's just as a total number. We received less this last fiscal year than the previous two. So it's kind of steady. So it's approximately the same amount in fiscal year 13 as fiscal year nine. Slightly more in fiscal year 10. And 11 and 12 were both at the five million point, for kind of the total amounts that were in the budget. So the collected amounts... Oh, actually, I misspoke. So that's the total amounts in the budget. So the actually impact fees collected were more...
Okay.
Yes, sorry. Yes, I misspoke. So, yeah, we collected the $715,000. Whereas in fiscal year 12, it was $595,000.
614.
614, yes. So apologize for that. In fiscal year 10, we collected one point, or one million approximately. So it looks like it varies year-to-year, depending on the development we see in the city.
Looks like the balances are healthy, though.
Yes.
They're all three funds, so...
Yes.
Any other questions, Hillary? Hearing none. We're at commission comments. Commissioners?
I forget, but when do we elect a chair?
Yes, March.
I was all prepared for this month.
Sorry.
Good to be prepared.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none.
Should we thank Paula for her service on the commission as well?
Yes, this is Paula's last...
Oh, yeah. I guess Paula's going to be leaving us, going to the Urban Renewal Commission, so be looking for a replacement for her come next meeting or so. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for having me. I've learned a lot.
[laughing] That's what we're here for.
You.
Okay.
Great.
Move to adjourn? We're adjourned.